Before we open the meeting, like, John Danton, leaders of the players, Chief Matt Haring, pray for him.
I pray that we just through the way of the United States of America, to the people of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather and do the city's business. Lord, we thank you for being faithful to us and taking care of us. We thank you for providing a way after this storm with the city's budget and all that we're trying to accomplish in our great city. We ask that you be with each and every one of us and help us through this meeting and help us through the rest of this week. In Jesus' name we pray.
I will call the meeting to order, and the first item is the consent agenda, which is, excuse me, let me give them. The first item is the consent agenda, which includes regular meeting minutes of September 3rd and the emergency meeting of August 30th. We, everyone had a chance to look over those, any additions, corrections, deletions?
Motion approved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Ashbrook, second from, second, Commissioner Hoffman, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries for o. Building Department update, you have that in your agenda packet. I would like to have that, that I think that maybe we could get Kelly maybe quarterly to give us a cumulative update, which would just tell us the permits that have been issued since the hurricane. I'd be more interested in that than the weekly. It's kind of like the code enforcement, it doesn't mean as much, but I would like to see how many roofs we've put on and how many homes that are being built back. So, I may ask her if she'd take care of that. I think she's got a spreadsheet. Okay, long-term recovery committee, we do not have a representative here tonight that I see, PSJRA update, Commissioner Ashbrook, any additions to that? The last time?
No update this time.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission. First is ordinance 563, the adblock property taxes for 2019 to 2020. It's before this commission for consideration for second reading and adoption, as well as public input for adoption.
Okay, is there a motion for second reading of ordinance 563?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Ashbrook?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langston for second reading of 563. Is any discussion, anyone from the audience like to discuss the adblock property tax ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
O, same sign, motion passed for o.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will have to read this ordinance in its entirety. Ordnance number 563, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, levying the adblock property tax mileage rate for municipal purposes on all taxable property within the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, stating a percentage by which the mileage levied is negative 6.20 percent less than the rollback rate and providing an effective date. Whereas Florida law requires the city commission in the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, to pass an ordinance or resolution levying the mileage rate for adblock property taxes for municipal purposes on all taxable property within the city limits of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020. Whereas Florida law requires said ordinance or resolution to state the mileage rate to be levied and also state the percentage by which the mileage rate is greater, equal to, or less than the rollback rate as computed for show in the Florida law. And whereas the city commission in the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, has duly considered the budgetary requirements of the city, has adopted a tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, based on a mileage rate of 3.5914 mils on the taxable property within the city, and has enacted in accordance with the terms, provisions, and procedures contained in section 200.065 Florida statute, now therefore being enacted by the people of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, and special assembled that the adblock property tax mileage rate for municipal purposes to be levied on the taxable property within the city limits of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, during the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, is hereby set at a rate of 3.5914 mils. Number two, the percentage by which this mileage rate to be levied is less than the rollback rate of 3.8288 mils, computed per show in the Florida law, is negative 6.20 percent. Number three, this ordinance shall be effective October 1, 2019, duly passed and adopted by the Board of City Commissioners, Port St. Joe, Florida, the 17th day of September 2019.
So, we need a motion to adopt. Motion by Commissioner Hoffman to adopt, a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Langston, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
O, same sign, we're good.
Next, Mayor, is ordinance 564, which is the city's budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. It's before this commission for second reading and consideration of adoption, as well as public input.
Motion for second reading.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook for a second reading, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langston, any discussion, any discussion from the public concerning our budget for the next fiscal year? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries for o.
Ordnance number 564, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, as the final budget in the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and providing for an effective date.
All right, a motion to adopt, so moved by Commissioner Langston, a second?
Second.
Is there a second by Commissioner Hoffman? Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries for o. I'd like to thank the staff and everyone who worked hard on this. Once again, we're very physically responsible, we keep it under tight ship, and I'm proud of everybody for working with us and us working with you. All right, Mr. City Attorney, that's it?
Nothing further, Mr. Stop, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Okay, Mr. Jim, you're up.
Yes, sir. First item we have on the agenda tonight under old business, Mayor Commission, is the Capital City Bank lease agreement. At our last meeting, the board did extend their lease offer to Capital City Bank in about $3,000 a month up to 15 months. I did have a meeting with Mr. Ramsey Sims with Capital City Bank this past week, did have a conversation with him in reference to lease agreement, did follow back with an email that he is asking the board to consider $2,000 a month instead of the $3,000. So I did provide that for you today for your consideration.
Okay, there is, I see, a representative from Capital City, if she would like to say anything, she's just here representing the bank, okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mayor, I think what I was looking for in this agreement was some forward movement and some motivation to actually start an action plan, and I think that they've shown that, I'm going to move that we accept the $2,000 a month.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, there's a motion to accept $2,000 a month, for what period of time?
14 years.
I believe what they're asking for initially is, I believe it's for 12 months and then month to month after that, I believe. The main focal point is, if they wish, is $2,000 a month instead of $3,000.
Motion is for 12-month period, $2,000 a month.
There's a motion for, for $2,000 a month for a period of 12 months, which, well, I really need to, we got to rescind the original motion before we can take action on this, because we already, we had a unanimous decision on $3,000 for a month for 15 months.
I believe I made that motion, and I'm not currently prepared to rescind the original motion. Based on the fact, we discussed that the bank has been on site free of charge for what will be 13 months. If we looked at extending in November, and when we discussed the $3,000, we discussed the fact that actually it's $1,500 if you look at it on a year basis, because they didn't pay anything for a year. That's where the $3,000 was. I'd like to also add that if we are going to negotiate the price, we were at 3, they're at 2, you don't just take the 2. I mean, the least that I think the city should be looking at if we're going to budge off of the 3 would be counter the, their offer, the same way they countered ours, and you'd be at $2,500. But I'm going to leave the original motion where it stands.
And I would ask that, legal question, Mayor, that an original motion would have to be withdrawn, so my motion, I should have to withdraw it at this point, is that correct?
Essentially, your motion is nullified at this point. Commissioner Hoffman, if you so choose, which he's, he's explaining he's not willing to, but just for the process, if Commissioner Hoffman wanted to withdraw, he could, and then we could nullify that with unanimous vote from the board and move forward, and then there could be another motion to negotiate or accept the price or what have you, but again, I'm not trying to overstep what Commissioner Hoffman plainly said, just explain the process.
All right, so at this time, there's no motion on the floor?
Does the Capital City Bank staff, are they empowered to negotiate here today, or do we need to go back?
No, I think she's shaking her head, saying she's here to represent the bank, and that would be, that would be it, so.
Well, and I, you know, I also mentioned the fact that I spoke to the bank president, Wayland, prior to the meeting, and he was under the weather and couldn't attend the last time we discussed this, and I asked him, when I spoke to Wayland, you know, where, what do you feel as far as that price? And I told him that I, if my thoughts were that it's going to be about $3,000, was going to be discussed, and Wayland agreed that the fact they had been there for what would be a year, he said seemed fair to him. Now, had they been paying something all along, I would agree that's probably a little too high.
Yeah, and actually, if we take the period of time that they've been there, and add the 15 months, that comes out 27 months, and it equates to $1,600, $6,000.
Right.
If we go all the way to 15, like we voted last time, so. And they're currently not on city water or sewer, so, anyway, there's, you're not with your own motion. It'll stand as was voted on in the last meeting.
Unless we want to direct that.
Absolutely.
We was talking about the year that they've been on, that's understandable, but they didn't pay anything, but we have to take into account too that it was a hurricane attack, and at that time, we had to get something open so the customers could get there and do some business for us banking, but I understand what Commissioner Hoffman is saying, and if he's not going to take his motion, man, I think that we need to just consider that year that they were there, it was a catastrophe that cost them to be there.
Got you, I understand what you're saying.
And I understand about the water and the sewer also, so I just want to say that.
Right, and you're absolutely right, people had to have access to their money, and it was, I wasn't here, and it was the right thing to do. Okay, moving right along, under new business, Jim?
Yes, sir. BCC Contract, Bay County Containers, staff has been working with Mr. Jason Tenell to put the final touches on the contract, we're hoping to get it to you today, there's still a couple of things that Mr. Tenell is working on, he anticipates getting that to staff tomorrow, so as soon as we get that, we'll get that in your hands to be looking at, because we need to vote on this. The plan is to turn it over to Bay County Containers on October 1. We do meet on October 1, we need to finalize this contract.
Absolutely. Sooner or later?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Lighthouse Lights, the folks that strung the lights to the lighthouse last year, which was beautiful, everybody thought it was the greatest thing, they just strictly asked me to bring up and get the commission to approve them doing it again, and they're going to, they want to have them up by the 10th of October, which is the anniversary date of Hurricane Michael, and would like to leave them up through, through New Year's, so we need a motion to that effect.
Motion.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langston, any discussion?
I'd like to say something, I just want to say that seeing those lights, after that hurricane, it really made, I felt safe, if I can say, gave us a sense of normalcy, and I'd just like to tell them I really appreciate and thank them for what they've done with those lights.
Folks coming from far around to look at those. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries for o. Public Works?
Mayor, I don't have any updates unless there's questions from the board.
I had a question that I asked Jim this morning, he answered it, but I'll ask you so, about the bridge for the walking path, what's our timeline on that?
We should be about a week and a half away from their engineering submitting, the first round of submissions. We've released the task order for clay for the foundation plan, so once we get the first of metal and we execute that back to them, the actual construction will begin, so six weeks, but I suppose we're looking at that.
Mayor, I have something as well. John, is there any way, I've gotten calls from three of the people that live on that 16th Street Alley, two on the back side, one on the 98th side, that said that they're doing all this work, they're getting it all cleared out in the back, is there any way that we can go and clear out the drainage system? They seem to feel like that fills up and it blocks up everything up the line as well.
I spoke to actually the homeowner last week about that very subject, but yes, let me answer that question.
Okay, I guess there's broken grates and there's a lot of debris clogging it up.
There's everything, it just needs to be cleaned.
Correct, thank you.
Any questions for John? Okay, Mr. Larry, surface it.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing at this time unless there's questions.
Anyone? Moving right along, wastewater cannon?
Nothing new for the commission unless you guys have questions.
Ponds down?
We're pushing and we'll continue to push the water down to the end of this month, and then next month we'll start replacing filters, so we're trying to get down as slow as we can before we tear everything apart.
Good. Any other questions, Ken?
We better come up with something, we're at 20 minutes.
Hey, I heard that we had another issue, and I guess it's for you, John, as well, with grease in the lift station on First Street. I saw a big crew, saw you down there with gloves on, that's what, when I asked one of the guys, they said that they, something about grease again from one of the local restaurants could be the culprit.
Well, I think the safe answer, sure, will be grease from all the local restaurants, so we can't single one out. I think it's everybody, but, yeah, and I think what we, what we experienced Thursday night was also a culmination of that station itself. You know, we've talked about this for a long time, about it needing to be replaced, it hasn't been cleaned in quite some time internally, and that's when the block which took place was internally in the lift station, it wasn't out of the collection system per se. You know, that, the main issue was right there at the station that we opened up.
Well, my train of thought was, if you do begin to feel that we have a particular establishment business putting large amounts of grease down the line, I would just ask that you work with Richie and have him first find out who's paying for that service, because they pay to have that, that grease picked up, and if we have nine out of the 10 restaurants paying for it, then when you have one that's not?
And I believe there was a notification sent out to all of the restaurants specifically on that topic, so, you know, they are at least aware now with the requirement target of the city's perspective. Now, the enforcement aspect will have to come through Richie, you know, to make sure they're doing what they should do with the grease.
Are they, are they having to show that they are paying for the service, the pickup service, when they use grease tall?
Jim, do you want to answer that with a letter? I believe it was in there that, in the notification, it stated just that, that if upon asked, you know, they would have to, you know, provide proof that they were disposing of the grease in the proper manner, so.
That's all I had.
Obviously, it's not a requirement, when they apply for a business license, it's not a requirement then for the restaurant to have proof of grease contract pickup.
It is a requirement of all the restaurants in town to have to follow the pre-treatment ordinance from the city of Port St. Joe. Normally, those are taken care of when you get your development order at this point, like with the new restaurants coming on board, we make sure that the building department takes care of those, and we can do periodic inspections of those by that ordinance on there, so, yes, and we did send a letter out several weeks ago, reminding all of the ordinance, and that they are subject to inspection of records from the city.
Good, Mayor, just a question, maybe suggestion, is there any way that we could require a business license for food and beverage to produce annually to get the renewal of receipt, showing that they have a contract for grease?
I think you could buy your ordinance for your pre-treatment, I don't think you could just based on a business license, because it's actually just a tax, but you do have an ordinance in place, it does require certain aspects of all restaurant businesses to have a pre-treatment process.
It just feels like a lot of the problems we have is because there's no teeth in the enforcement side, and I don't know if there's any way we can tighten that up.
We have, we have identified all the businesses in town that we feel that should be subject to that ordinance on there, a letter has been sent out, so the next step will be, if we have problems, to go out and actually periodically inspect those to make sure they're being compliant.
That's, that's a lot of, that's a lot that we're putting on Richie's back, that's why we need another code enforcement guy, so that we can get some of those things done. He has, another thing, he has to do size of his bit of grease trash.
And we have advertised Commissioner Ford, that was easy, and for the special master, so those are kind of.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate it.
Okay, let's see, we're on finance, Maya?
I'd just like to reiterate your comments and thank the mayor and commissioners for the work on the budget, and certainly our city staff does a great job of managing our finances for the city, and just wanted to thank you all for that effort. And I also wanted to mention on the BCC contract, that BCC is supposed to start delivering residential garbage cans today, but that citizens aren't supposed to use those cans until October 1st, but BCC should start delivering residential cans starting this week.
Yeah, I'm seeing somewhere around.
Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, all right, Mr. Clay, city engineer?
Yes, sir, really, on the trailer lighting, Duke Energy Dome, they're finalizing their new number for the lights, so we really need that caution now so we can know how much money has left for the park for the rest of the trailer. So I'm waiting on that, but it isn't working, it's been a couple of weeks, they're working on it, confirming that they're close to having something for us. The road fund money, I'm waiting on, the contractor for the patches, prices back for the copter for patches, been after for a couple of weeks, and they told me to be there, go get me something, but we need that so we can set the final budget for the dig apart, so that's where that is. And then, the last one was a DEM grant.
Jim, you on it?
Yeah. Approximately a week ago, we found out there's money available coming down from the far, the Division of Emergency Management. This is approximately $25 million that's going to be allotted, from my understanding, for five counties, that we're thinking about Hurricane Michael. It's a pretty stringent criteria, you better do it, and we don't have a whole lot of time to put it together, we have till October 1, but we want to put something in. If you look at the criteria of what's eligible on there, it's pretty limited, local or county revenue loss, which we got some of that money from Restore Act, local or county operation deficits, infrastructure, building, roads, bridges, et cetera, repairing or replacement, and then they go on beach renourishment, debris removal, those two we know we're not allowed, we don't have any beaches and debris removal, particularly by the state of Florida. So you don't have any areas that you can apply for. The other thing, there's some caveats down here that talk about proof that the project is ineligible for FEMA public assistance, well, we've applied for everything we can for public assistance in hoping that we get some of that money from the federal government. So we may not know a year, two years down the road, Mike's been working hard, so has John and Clay, and trying to gather everything we can up to apply for that federal money. And then the next thing is this signed letter certifying that proposed project is not eligible for insurance proceeds or FEMA PA funded. So, staff suggestion is, let's come up with something to put in there to ask, and it's got to be between $1 and $10 million, so it's got to be a substantial project. You know, to have that much money, I don't know that you're going to be able to show that much revenue loss, we only had roughly $80,000 in adblock taxes, which we got reimbursed for, you're down roughly 216 customers right now still to date on the utility side, it's only, you know, if you annualize that over 100, it's only a quarter million dollars, so that's not large enough. So maybe you put in something, a big, big project, is it Long Avenue Water, Sewer, Storm, and Road? Do you look at all the roads in town that may have had damage from the storm? Do you look at a new government complex? It's got to be something large. So maybe we pick one, but we don't have, boy, we have 15 days to put it out in case of, so we're living on time, but we want to bring it to you to put something in, so we need your help to try to decide what we want to do.
We're going to piecemeal Long Avenue to death, and personally, I think we should, it's shovel-ready project, I think we should submit a complete Long Avenue project, which is approximately $5 million, and submit the 20th Street Lift Station, and, I mean, those are not, we can't get insurance money, we, we don't know if we get FEMA, we really don't think we can for, for that project anyway, so that's, that's what I would like to do.
Those are good, Mayor, and I think between Beacon Hill and Jones Homestead, we probably have $8 million worth of projects for sewer that we might take a look at. That's a big chunk, we've been looking at sewer progress for years.
Yep, and we can't pave our roads until we fix all what's under those roads, so we got, we got it today, so that would be my suggestion, I'm open to additions.
I would like to focus on multiple items, because as I was talking to Jim today, I'm afraid if we put in for one item, that their committee that's going to make the decision is not that keen on, then we've lost everything. But if we apply for the grant and we put in lift stations, maybe even First Street Lift Station, that's a million dollars, and we cover it, because I'm reading here, we're up against the county, we're up against school boards, charter schools, they're going to divvy up the money, and I think the higher what you seek, the better chance we're going to have of getting something substantial accomplished.
We also have downtown to finish up as well, this might be something to think about.
Clay, you have suggestions?
Yeah, some of those caveats that Mr. Anderson went over in terms of infrastructure projects, it's hard to find one that's been damaged by the storm, is not going to qualify for FEMA, you know, that's a really small window, and I don't really know one that stands out. It's possible you can make an argument for the First Street Lift Station, that, and that the station itself didn't get destroyed per se, but you've got a lot of silt and sediment that ran through that thing due to the storm, and it certainly has caused damage. We can get it in a different location and, you know, modify it somewhat, make it a little more storm resistant in the future than.
Yeah, you have 20th Street, you know 20th Street, that's not a big, big ticket item, but it's, I don't know, that may.
It isn't, I mean, I, I really think that one's going to be FEMA funded to some degree, I don't know if they're going to let us move it and do everything we want to do to it, we're just not far enough home with it, and I think some of that is certainly being reimbursed. You know, if you could come up with two or three years of water sewer customer loss and ask for that, I mean, I kind of, like Mr. Hoffman suggested, Mr. Hoffman suggested, you know, ask for two or three things, you know, ask for lift station, ask for some revenue loss, you know, and see where it falls, because I, I don't know, and this is, this is DEMs, they're not grant people, I mean, they deal with FEMA, they don't deal with grants, and so my guess is they're going to figure some of this out in this application. And so, my guess is they're gonna figure some of this out as applications come in too, I guess, you know? So, I, that may be a good idea to turn two or three in.
We, we definitely need to shoot for the money.
But it's a non-matched grant, so.
And, and I'm thinking also that this would be closer to coming down the pipe than, than trying to wait for FEMA money and wait for these grant writers and giving them passports and all that. This, this money is out there, they're ready for us to try, apply for it, and, and we're, we're ready to use it, so.
All they can say is no.
But, but at this point in time, we need to, we need to task, uh, Clay and Clay and Jim and John and all concerned to go ahead and, uh, give them a list of what we're gonna go for.
Well, the, the other item that, that I discussed earlier today was the city has been awarded, what, $330,000 for seed money for a new building or?
It's $312,000.
$312,000 to purchase land to hopefully build a new, uh, building for City Hall, maybe the fire department, police department, and house, you know, us in a better location. Currently, we, we're in a building that our, our police department can't even use. Uh, can't be used, uh, I think the building has problems, to be honest with you. We have to start looking long range at a new building. We've got to get out of City Hall and build something new. And the question is, will they ask funding, you know, do you throw this into this mixture? I don't know, because I don't know how much these other items are gonna go. But I would like to interject that if we have an additional, uh, five, if we only come up with $5 million, then we need to be asking for 10. It says you have to ask for a minimum of one not to exceed 10. I say we go, uh, with a list, and when we set the application, we're at $10 million. So, if there is money left, let's ask for that money to go to, uh, the construction of the building.
The only downside to that, Commissioner, is that we've got two weeks, and, and I don't think they're gonna, just, just 'cause we want one, give us the money. We, we don't have any plans, we don't have any potential plans, we don't have any land. I mean, uh, they can see through that hardly.
But we did get the $312,000, and we, and we don't have land. That's the, I guess, we go buy the land.
I agree. So, some other comments from you guys? Got other items you're thinking about we need to go for?
I mean, I think anything that's on our capital improvement plan for the next five years can be looked at. Uh, the sewer, sewers can be done by project. Beacon Hill Sewers, Jones Homestead Extension, finishing out the Cape can be another project that's already engineered, just need to submit it. So, we do separately, so they can't deny them all.
And, and, and just to be clear, and I'm fine with, uh, sewer upgrades and all that, as long as you're not indicating or implying in any way the purchase of the, that sewer system out there.
I'm over that, Commissioner.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure.
My question is, uh, that's outside the city limits on there. I don't know that, and that's, that's future expansion. I don't know if they would, if that's criteria on there, 'cause basically it says, uh, the criteria back to, Clay, have you got any indications on that? But basically, it was saying.
Yeah, just what you read off.
Local or county revenue loss, local or county operating deficits, infrastructure building, roads, repairs or replacement. That would be more of expansion, so I don't know that that would qualify.
Well, I think the county could, the county would have to sign off on, maybe have something that works as well.
Yeah, they'd make it say that it's a replacement of, you know.
So, so what, what, what about this, uh, can we apply separately for, let's say, Long Avenues, Water and Sewer?
Green Avenue Alley, it's two, Mayor.
Green Avenue Alley, First Street and 20th Street Lift Stations?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with all of the items that we've discussed.
But just do them separately instead of the money?
Uh, I think so, and, and the only other thing that I would ask is that we, we tally up to be at the maximum of the $10 million.
I agree.
But I, I think they're all very good suggestions.
There, there are some moves identified as well to the schema process that we could pay, uh, Monument from 20th down to Memorial, Dupont, and then there's, these roads are out, you know, or utilities are outside of that. So, there's some improvements could be made for those as well.
Uh, what about Woodward? Do we have infrastructure problems there on Woodward between 10th and 16th Street? Pretty rough.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but it's in the middle of it. I'm speaking of roads we could pave with no infrastructure under.
I got you, I got you.
It's part of this grant, if you want.
So, yeah, let's, let's, maybe, uh, maybe you could come up with a list of those that don't require that centerline, um, sewer water.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. I already got it.
Okay, that'll add to.
Mayor, um, I was thinking, I'm just reading over, and I see it said, uh, beach renourishment slash recreational facilities, and, uh, we've been talking about bathrooms in Washington High, uh, if we can add, if there's anywhere we can add something, uh, add that in, uh, as a project to help out with that, or should we, uh, uh, just, just wait and, uh, see what we wanna do with the insurance money or FEMA money or, uh, what's your, what's your opinion on that?
I think it, I think it would qualify. And, and as far as roads, any, any roads, uh, any roads in the city, John, that, that you, that could qualify and without the infrastructure issue.
And, and also, I was thinking about the Centennial, uh, Centennial Build. I know we got this, uh, we got grants, uh, applying for grants for, uh, the Centennial Build, but is there any way that we can squeeze some of that in and try to do some improvements with inside there, or, because that, that building's been there for, I know, over 100, uh, 100 years, you know? Is there any way that, um, because of the historical grants that we're putting in with that interfering with us, um, trying to get something for, for, uh, Centennial Build through this grant right here that we're talking about right now, Jim?
I think at the end of the day, if you got awarded one or the other, you may have to relinquish the money on one or the other on there. At which one has the best chance? I don't know, Chris.
Well, we've got, I think, the grant for the Centennial is $350, what now?
$291,000.
$291,000?
$52,000.
Okay. Um, I, I'd go for the best and highest, uh, on that, Mr. Langton. I, I'm, I'm an eternal optimist. I, I think, I think we're gonna get it this year. I, I think we're gonna get it this year, so.
I think the question comes in, or do each one of these go ahead to have a separate application? That's what I, that's what I've gotta get my mind around. Can we lump all this into one to get to that mid, one million, between one million and $10 million? Or do we need to file a separate application, one for the Centennial Build, one for the Washington Gem, one for Long Avenue?
That's a question, 'cause if each one has to get.
Be a million and $10 million, then that could, that could pose some problems.
Exactly, yeah.
Maybe we could do recreational, say, two or three of the facilities together. I don't know.
So, so you and Clay will be busy for the next two weeks. Busier, busier, and, and John.
Y'all have trouble cutting up the $10 million, just call us.
So.
We're gonna get some stuff.
Let's do it. And, and any of us that are sitting up here have ideas, uh, let's, let's go to Jim and put them in there. All they do is say nothing.
We'll, we'll get some stuff, but.
I appreciate, I'd like to say, I appreciate the hard work for, um, I mean, because it's so deep grants, it is not easy to do, and, um, finding them is not easy, you know? I, I just, I appreciate the, uh, the hard work that you're doing to, to open our eyes up to see what we have, you know?
How did this grant come to the attention of the city?
We started getting blanketed by emails last week, uh, coming down from the state. These, it seemed like every day we're seeing something different. These are all new grants that we've never seen before, or at least I haven't seen them, you know, 'cause we've never had contact like we had Hurricane Michael. So, we're seeing tons of different grants come down, but the criteria is so tough on all these things. But they're coming down like tomorrow. We have a meeting tomorrow, uh, with Marshall Epps' office, uh, I think it's Thursday in reference to the other portion of DEM money. There's another $20 million, another pot. So, there's so many different areas of money, and our plan is to, at the next commission meeting, to bring you some proposals from our grant administrators to see about putting all this together as a plan. So, we're best in the backgrounds of being worked on too, because we need their expertise to really handle all this stuff for us.
Well, the reason I ask, I think I'd be a little more pleased if the answer to the question was our newly hired grant writers found us grant holders. That sounds like we found it ourselves.
Yeah, they, they have sent us a few, but right now, what's happening is, uh, we're, they're sending out these press releases, and then all these different organizations are sending them on to us too. So, we, we get three, four, five different copies from, we wanna come from the state, we wanna come from the Fed, we wanna come from your representatives.
Jim, is this the one that I sent a couple of weeks back that I said I hadn't talked to Sandy about, Commissioner Quinn, uh, for possibly money to help demolish some homes that had given permission to demolish? Is that, is that this?
There's two different ones. I'm not sure, Commissioners. There's this one and the one that we're gonna meet with the, um, committee at the county. The other one acts, the other side actually flows from DEM down to the county, down to the committee, where the committee make a recommendation to the county commission, so.
That's one of the things that I think is important too, that these folks that, you know, we don't even know who owns the homes anymore, or they've, they've figured it out and they don't want the property. If there's any money to help take those houses down and make it clean space, that would be helpful.
And that's coming. As soon as we get down to the, to the point where we turn it over to our special master, we're gonna have some orders come down that we're going to make some tough decisions if we wanna try to lay down some structure.
We'll get a pot of money available.
And then you're gonna need the money to do it, yes, sir.
Okay, any more questions for Clay? Okay, thank you very much. Code enforcement, we, we discussed that, uh, police department, uh, Mr. Matt, do you have anything tonight?
I do not, Mayor, thank you.
You hired a new person, I heard.
It will be a virus, offering a job to a new person that's gonna start October 7th.
Very good.
Yes.
Great. Any questions, Mr. Matt?
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Charlotte?
Uh, the Christmas parade is December the 14th, and all of you have committed to participate, and I appreciate that, and we're looking forward to it.
You did?
Yes, sir. And also, Ghost on the Coast Superintendent Norton, Mr. Anderson, we've been talking. Apparently, everyone enjoyed having it at the elementary school last year. It was very convenient and working on something there.
Great.
And also remind you of the Tallahassee meeting next Thursday, 9:00 AM, the Florida Historical Commission. The city of Port St. Joe will be the number four grant to be heard, and just hopefully they will smile publicly, and as we're over there in 16, 17, 18, and this will be 19. So, it's, it would be very nice for them to award us the grant.
Thank you for.
Thank you, sir.
All the work on that and our persistence to try to finally get it. All right, we're down to Citizens to Be Heard. Anyone in the audience wanting to speak tonight? Come up, please, Ms. Matthews.
Well.
Please sign in.
I got, uh, about three weeks ago, I received a letter from the code enforcer about my property online with the king. And, of course, I did what I could do. I re-boarded the windows and stuff like that. And the following day, it was just as bad as it was the day before, all except the boarding, of course. There was garbage on the property, there was cans, there were broken glass and all that. So, how do I remedy that, or how do the Ford, the Ford enforcer view that? So, there's two questions. Do they realize that I'm done work on the property and I'm not being fined $250,000? Or am I being fined? And how would people know if I boarded that?
Well, I think the question for, you, you cleaned up the property and, and then someone else possibly, uh, came along and trashed it. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, I don't know if it was someone or somebody's that, you know, the cans are there, the bottoms are there, but you can tell that, um, the grass is gone and, you know, I have fixed it. But who, I've tried to get people to do it prior to that, but who wants a little job when they got bigger jobs out there, so.
Anyone got comments on that?
Mayor, I think you got it. I think Mr. Matthews got a couple of issues there. I think first off, you're talking about somebody that may be on private property, maybe, she may be able to post a property as private property possibly if she has people trespassing on her property, that may be something to look at there. But I think there's also another issue with the actual code, uh, violation is actually substandard structure. I believe you have several structures right along there that don't have roofs, uninhabitable. So, at some point, those are gonna have to come before this board to make a decision that you're gonna get a recommendation from your special master as to whether those substandard structures need to be removed.
Did I say something?
Yes, sir.
I think, um, it's more of the latter. The first thing that Jim said, uh, trespassing on property, uh, because if there's people sit up there on a property, backhand with vehicles, and they, and throw cans and trash, I mean, out the window, out their car, I mean, that's what the problem is. I'm just gonna be honest and straight up, that's what the problem is. And, um, it, it's, it's no way you're gonna, um, remedy that. Police, because you go up there, you say something to them, they'll, they'll allow it to get, um, talked down on, and, uh, so, that's just a problem that, that we, she has on her property, that's a serious problem that she has on her property.
Maybe the first, uh, suggestion would be the best of, uh, post signs, no trespassing, uh, maybe, uh, you talk to the chief and give you some guidance on that, because if you do see, see somebody on there, then call to them, they can hopefully remedy that for you. But that's.
Yeah.
All I know.
'Cause I'm not gonna push anybody in cars.
No, you should.
One or more.
No, you should.
But that's only gonna solve the second item.
That's correct.
I, I keep hearing there's two items. One, there's garbage. We can pick, get that picked up, somebody can pick it up. But I don't think that's what the letter really is identifying. I think the letter is more focused, and, and I haven't seen the letter, but I've heard discussions about different properties that are in such disrepair that they need to do something. The property owners need to either tear them down, fix them up, or, you know, do something. I think that's the issue that's really being focused on.
Well, the foundation is a good foundation, and I have boarded it up. The storm came along again, I boarded some of them, and the ones that they did, I found they got somebody to re-board. So, how, again, is the code enforcer coming out to check and see if work has been done?
Oh, yes.
Or do I have to pay the $250,000?
Oh, go ahead, uh, Mr. Clay. He would be dealing with the structural issue and having not seen the letter, so you have to give me that understanding, but I think it would be a good idea for Ms. Matthews to speak with Richie to determine what would it take to, um, become compliant under, uh, the Port St. Joe's LDRs. Uh, once, so communication will be key between the private property owner and our code enforcement officer. At this time, I have not seen the letter. I couldn't tell you what he says in there, but, um, typically fines aren't imposed until after, uh, it's been brought before or magistrate. So, that's one issue, but becoming compliant is the goal for the city, so I think if, um, if we could have the property owner speak to the code enforcement officer so that at least there's clear dialogue as to what it would take to be compliant or possibly be compliant, that probably would at least, in this particular case, alleviate the issue.
Good advice, so, there you go. Hopefully that answered your question.
It does, yes. And I still have another problem. There's some low hanging wires, uh, on Apollo. They're so low that if, um, it doesn't even, a semi truck passed by, it will snatch the wires down. So, really, it need to be addressed, closer than my property, because it is, you know, something happened, the kids are out there playing, and there are quite a few on that street, so. So, I need to go and take a look at.
I saw the chief writing. I don't know if you're gonna check it out, or John, or, or who. So, somebody take a look at that, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, anyone else in the audience? Anyone? Okay. Discussion items by commissioners, uh, who wants to be first? Mr. Langton, I'm gonna leave it up to you.
I don't have anything, yeah.
All right.
Mayor, I, I whittled down to one thing. A while back, I mentioned, hold on, had it off of my coffin. Uh, a while back, I mentioned that I'd like to see some sort of an incentive to kind of put a spark behind builders to start building more residences within the city limits. Uh, and I'm just kinda looking for the blessing of the board for me to go out and work with the attorney on. the attorney, and coming up with some sort of ordinance, and of course, we'll come back to y'all. And I'm thinking, kind of mirroring it after what we did. In fact, Mayor, I think you might have been on the board, and we said at one point, we did a 30% reduction of fees for a term of one or two years. Jim, do you remember that?
There was a reduction.
It was for a set period of time, though.
Yeah, there was 30% on fees, I'm trying to remember, it was for a year.
And what I was, what I'm kind of, in my head, just make it simple, so there's no formulas to figure out, in my head, it was 1% for per habitable structure. If you build 20 units, you get 20% off your fees. If you build 100 units, you don't pay. And it would be across the board, to everybody, it would be fair, very simply written, and it's per development order. You can't just double up on phases of projects. Once you do your development order, it's however many units it is, and that's 70% you can get off. It was kind of my mindset on that, and I would just want feedback from the board. Am I wasting my time, or would that be something y'all would consider?
I would probably lean toward no.
I would have to do a lot more thinking about it before turning someone loose, because we had the affordable housing folks up here last meeting, and I don't think the tenor of the board was to grant them any relief on impact fees and so forth, because we couldn't afford it, so. And they would be first to line up, and I'm just, I think it'd be, I'm not sure how it could be really written simply.
Well, I think it's a great idea, don't get me wrong, Commissioner, I like the idea, I just don't think the timing is good for the City of Port St. Joe. I mean, we're trying to figure out how we can maintain a budget, and that's my only concern, is the timing.
Well, maybe staff can clarify, impact fees, what can those be used for, Jim, that does not factor into our general budget, does it? That's not something we make payroll with.
Impact fees, to my, best of my recollection, is mainly it's all tied to your debt service. You've got almost $20 million in debt service currently on there. I believe 72%, if I remember correctly, can be used towards debt service, but also they can be used by statute for expansion for the plant. Part of it's for your plants, and part of it is for your distribution system, so portion of that could go for each.
So it's not really taking out an operational side of the budget. And my thoughts have always been, you know, take it off the top now, and then you have those customers forever. So if you abate, you know, a $50,000 water sewer hookup fee for a large residential structure, you've got 50 customers that are now paying you in perpetuity, that actually goes into the operating budget of our plan.
Well, but the question that I would have to have answered is, do you think there's any developers or development plans, or home builders, individual home builders, currently looking at building in the city limits of St. Joe, that would not build based on not getting this discount?
That's true, yeah, and that's a hard question to answer. You know, that's, it's an incentive, but there's probably three or four projects already in the works that could take advantage.
And that's what I'm leaning towards. We already have a hotel being built at Marina, we already have multiple houses going in off of Avenue A. There's only so much land left in the city limits, and it's such a precious and sacred piece of land at this time. I was looking for a lot to think about, build a new house. There's not many lots left, so I'm leaning towards, the people are still gonna build if you waive the fees or not, so why not collect the fees?
I've got a lot of 20, talk to me after.
What else, Commissioner Asher?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Robb, you don't have any?
Yeah, I got a few things. But remember, I didn't have anything else about that idea, but I got a couple of mine.
I tried.
Just remember, I did shave one thing from last week, because I went into two hours. Okay. The first thing is, I've had a request from a citizen, I think it's a good idea to maybe look at putting a flagpole in the middle of Buck Griffin Pond, and I told him that if we had power run out there, because the flags have to be lit at night, it might be something doable. So the fact that we have power, and I've already lost, I've already lost Mike and John on this idea, but that's okay. I'd like to at least look into it. We did have an irrigation pump out there spraying the water, the motor's burned up, but we have power. It's not a huge ticket item, I don't think, but I think it'll be something that the people in St. Joe may like, so let's get that done, however we do it.
You're gonna skipper the boat on half a minute.
Are you talking about on that island, that there's already a boardwalk to the island, or are you talking about putting it up in the middle of the pond?
The pictures that I was sent were, and I'm guessing it was in Bay County, they had a lake over there that has a flagpole out in the middle of the pond. So the pond is only probably, what, even just like six foot at the deepest area.
It varies. It varies quite a bit.
Well, if we could just get it, maybe a rough estimate of how much money we're talking about, it may be to where we can afford it, it may be where we can't. We may have to put it, you know, over on the other side of the pond, on the hill, but...
Do you have an idea where you want it, on 20th Street side of Buck Griffin?
That's what I think his suggestion was, where the aerator currently sits in the middle of the pond, not being used. So, I mean, usually, we get suggestions that are $200,000 or $300,000 projects, so I was kind of glad to get one that was maybe affordable. The other item is, I believe you've all received in your box in the last three weeks, information on a disc golf course. I guess they can't call it frisbee golf, so it's disc golf. That came from a local person, and according to him, it's like a $2,500 cost to set up the poles. Now, his idea was to utilize where the old golf course was, but I think we need to at least start entering into some discussion as to, is it a good idea?
Yeah, is that gonna interfere with our N R D grant?
I think it will.
So that's something to think about.
We may have to look at maybe a different location, being a better spot.
Definitely low impact, easy maintenance type situation.
It is, and according to Reese, it's actually a pretty popular sport. He's traveling to Panama City, I've seen big groups of people are doing it. It's not real intrusive to the area, so if we can at least do a little research, whoever might could do that.
It's all been done by Bill Kennedy Research, that guy that bought it years ago, and it is financially feasible to do. And he said it's just one concrete pad, and then a pole on the other end. But they actually have a course laid out for that.
Okay, well, I just, I didn't want to just let it lie, because I had talked to Reese weeks ago and said, drink it up. The only other item that I had is, I'm a little concerned and confused on the emails that I have seen in the last several weeks, if not months now. It appears that the county attorney, Novak, is moving towards a lawsuit against the city for sewage flooding in his office, and I realize that our attorney is not gonna represent the city in that because of conflict, but I think we need to clarify, or I would like some clarification, whoever we could use to get that clarification, as to, I kept reading it was a claim and not a lawsuit at this time. So if it's going to develop into a lawsuit, then we need to be prepared to hire an attorney to give suggestions to the city, because the figures that I saw were substantial, over, I wanna say half a million dollars. And that was for a lawsuit where sewage backed up into his business the day of the hurricane.
During the hurricane.
The day of the hurricane. So I think we need to start doing more than just sending emails and reading emails, we need to prepare ourselves for someone to guide us in the direction we need to go.
Adam, you wanna respond as far as, are we being sued, or are we not being sued?
At this time, the city is not being sued. A couple of weeks ago, it appears that Mr. Novak retained counsel based off an email. And just for the record, I'm handling this case, I see the emails because I am included as part of my duties as a city attorney, but he's retained counsel. I believe Mr. Anderson again made a claim to our insurance carrier, requesting that they step up to defend. My understanding of the carrier's position is that there's $200,000 in coverage if they believe liability is there, but they don't believe liability is there, so I'll allow no coverage. That is an odd way for an insurance company to handle it, usually, whether or not our carrier believes there's liability or not, they have a duty to defend. So I believe that's why Mr. Anderson, again, resubmitted with the new information provided by Mr. Novak's counsel, requesting coverage. I have, beyond that, I have no further information, I have not sent any other emails or anything else.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Do you feel like we should be seeking, not the services of an attorney, or where in that point?
I believe that the city should at least vet and be prepared to pick one and retain one, and I think there's a couple of ways to go about it. If this commission has somebody in mind that they want to hire, certainly they can do it. If they won't need to bring back suggestions, I can certainly do that. And then there's obviously a hybrid option, see all the above, but I do think that the city should have somebody in mind, communicated with somebody saying, if in fact this comes about, or if we decide we need you for a lawsuit, that the city knows where to go instead of saying, oh my God, we've got pursued, especially when it's been telegraphed at this point. I apologize if that's me, I don't know what to do.
Turn them off.
It's gonna be a phone, somebody's phone ringing.
Oh, is it? That's all I have.
I got a question about the insurance. You said we got $250,000, $50,000 of liability insurance?
From my memories, what insurance came back and told us, but what insurance is saying is, they get to make the determination if they believe there's liability or not, and conveniently or not, but it's odd, but assuming that's correct, they've said that the city has any liability, and as such, this $200,000 in coverage does not come into play, so we have no duty to defend you now. Conversely, if they looked at the claim and said, oh my goodness, we think the city's liable, then theoretically, they would have to profit that $200,000, or at least provide up to that amount, whether it's coverage or settlement or what have you. But this is an odd case for a policy to read that if the insurance company determines that there's liability, they would provide the coverage limits. If they don't, then they're not providing anything. If insurance carriers could do that for everybody, then they would always leave that out and say, well, we don't think there's liability, so we're not gonna provide coverage. So I think that's why Mr. Anderson resubmitted, again, with this updated information, to end up again asking them to review this file, because in a perfect world, insurance would step up and retain counsel, as we've seen on numerous occasions.
Why are they saying that, that if they're not liable, is it because of the storm?
I don't want to get into all the facts, but essentially, yes, is that the city is not liable because of the nature of the storm that occurred, created a number of factors that are not foreseeable. This is a negligent suit, and again, I have not handled it, I don't know all aspects of the suit, it's not even a suit, let me back up, claim, claim, to be real clear. But for negligence, you have to have a duty breach, causation and damages, so we may have a duty for the sewer system along, and I'm not speaking specifically to Mr. Novak, but for the sewer system along that road, but did we breach our duty? That would be the question. Or was there an intervening cause, and the insurance company's assessment is that there was an intervening cause, in this case Hurricane Michael, that superseded any duty that we may have, we didn't breach any duty we may have because of this intervening cause.
Bottom line is, I have to God, the cause of flooding, there's an act of God, the cause of flooding, their office, and that's why they're saying we have to.
Do we have the money in the budget, the budget that we just passed to hire another attorney to represent the city, and if this becomes a lawsuit, that concerns me, is...
No, I think we don't, I don't think we have any extra funds in the budget for another attorney.
Anything else, Commissioner?
That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Only thing I have is last meeting, Adam, we talked about, you said you were gonna research maybe a different way, our code violations, I have a little teeth, so you wouldn't have to always just place a lien on property, so get anywhere on that.
Yes, sir, I do have an update for you on that. When we spoke last week, I told you Bay County, Panama City, and some of the municipalities in Bay County were looking at different options, or using different options. Spoke to the Bay County County Attorney, and Bay County, Panama City, Panama City Beach specifically, are the three governmental entities using the approach I'm about to explain, all a little bit differently, but essentially what they're doing is, for the abatement issues, an abatement only, meaning where the city has to affirmatively come out and do something, and they, at least for the county, they're not necessarily doing it for cutting grass, but for something of substance. They're taxing it as a special assessment to that individual. I have not had a chance to go through our ordinances to look and see what our special assessment ordinances are, if we have any in-house, but ultimately, that is a methodology that can be used and something probably the city would like to look at for the demolishing of the houses, and things that we know are gonna be expensive. We want, and I've got language to review with our next magistrate, that would grant the city the authority to do that, instead of saying place a lien, it would allow for us, in his order, to make that a special assessment and a lien.
Because, gets to that point, we can afford to tear the building down, and wait for the property to be sold, so the lien will be paid off, so, I mean, you've got to have a little teeth in what we're trying to do, which, bottom line is clean up the city, that's all we're trying to do.
Yes, and with the special assessment, it's added on to the, I believe it's on the trim notice, but, and a little easier to get money than waiting for somebody to sell the property with the lien, usually is what you have to do unless it's homestead, or you have to look into foreclosure, which can be expensive just to get it foreclosed.
Okay, very good, that's all I have.
And I'll follow back up again, Mayor, once I've had a chance to look at our...
Appreciate that.
I'm out of water, motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you.